Bienvenidos, welcome to the Half Moon Bay City Council, October 1st, 2024. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rarback?
Here.
Mayor Jimenez?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. May we stand for the pledge, please? Thank you, thank you. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. She won.
Roll call.
Was there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rarback?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Today, we're gonna have a proclamation, the Hispanic Heritage Month. The Hispanic Heritage Month is the official celebration of those whose ancestry can be traced back to Mexico, Spain, the Caribbean, Central and South America. Today, we are honored to have two high school students to be the recipients of the Latino Heritage Proclamation. Bravo, bravo. Quienes a su edad, quienes a muy temprana edad, han logrado grandes éxitos académicos y han superado las barreras que conllevan ser una primera generación y estudiantes inmigrantes. Felicidades. For 2024, we'd like to present this proclamation to two outstanding students from Half Moon Bay High School, Sandra Garcia Palma and Elkin Lopez Arweta, who at a very young age have achieved great academic success and overcome barriers that come with being a first-generation and immigrant students. Congratulations. This observation started the Hispanic Heritage Week in 1968, but expanded to the Hispanic Heritage Month in 1988. The celebration starts on September 15th to mark the Independence Day of El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, and Costa Rica, followed by Mexico on the 16th, Chile on the 18th, Belize on the 21st. Esta semana de la herencia hispana, la celebración de la herencia hispana comenzó una semana en 1968, más se expandió al mes de la herencia hispana en 1988. Esta celebración comienza el 15 de septiembre para marcar la edad de la independencia de El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, Costa Rica, seguida por México el 16, Chile el 18, y Belize el 21. Y es un honor, illicit honor, to present and to continue to celebrate the Hispanic Latino Heritage Month in the city of Half Moon Bay. Muchísimas gracias. And now I can have Sandra and Elkin come to the podium, please. Yes, please. First of all, would any of you would like to make a comment or statement about the Latino Heritage Month?
Well, good evening to everyone. First of all, I want to say thank you so much for the opportunity, for the recognition toward us, because this for me, well, it's hard to express with words, but this for me is golden, because it not only inspires me to continue working hard in myself, but also to work hard to inspire other people to become an example for other people, for my people, los latinos. And that's my goal since I came to the United States. I came to the United States not only to be another immigrant or another person, but to set an example, to stand out. And I'm really happy and deeply grateful that you guys have given me this recognition so far. And I want to say thank you to my family who is here, for the people who have supported me, for the people who have believed in me, and to you all, to the counties of San Mateo. Thank you so much. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias. Thank you. Muchas gracias. Sandra?
Hello. Good evening to everyone. I would like to say thank you for everyone for also believing in me and giving me this support. Thank you for my Hispanic community for pushing me to work harder every single day and hopefully to make them proud one day. Thank you.
Gracias, gracias. That is a feel-good story. Me, myself, and immigrant from Mexico, came to the United States at the age of 13. And it's always been an honor to represent the city of Half Moon Bay in power of City Council and also the first mayor, Mexican immigrant, you know, elected to Half Moon Bay. So Elkin and Sandra, hope to see you here in the future, you know, yeah, my support, so. Thank you. We have a second proclamation, is domestic violence. The prevention of domestic violence. Today, you know, the month of October, we recognize as the month to prevent domestic violence. Tonight, we'd like to bring an attention to October, is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, a critical time to shed light on the issues that affect individuals and families throughout San Mateo County, including right here in Half Moon Bay. I first want to say thank you to nonprofit organizations, community, and the community toward overcoming relationship abuse, known as CORA, along with the law enforcement and social services for their ongoing efforts to support survivors and raise awareness of domestic violence. Statistics show that more than one in three women, one in four men, and one in two transgender individuals will experience some form of intimate partner violence in their lifetime. These numbers highlight the urgency of addressing this issue. Undocumented individuals, transgender individuals, and people living disabilities face an increased risk of domestic violence due to the system, systemic marginalization. Make it essential to provide target support. Last year, CORA, 24-hour crisis hotline received over 8,200 calls, and nearly 2,400 individuals participating in education programs about healthy relationships and inmate partner abuse. Also, last year, in San Mateo County, 94 adults and children were provided with emergency shelter, and 76 households received a rental assistance to escape abuse situations. This shows the critical role of local services in providing immediate safety as well as long-term solutions. During that time, 1,925 people sought legal assistance. 485 individuals received therapy to help recover from domestic violence-related trauma. This underscores the comprehensive nature of the support provided. Addressing domestic violence requires a collective effort. Every resident can play a role in making our community safe and supporting those affected by intimate partner violence. The city of Half Moon Bay, in partnership with San Mateo County, will continue to support survivors and work towards raising awareness and eliminating domestic violence in all forms. We acknowledge the importance of everyone's commitment and encourage ongoing involvement during Domestic Violence Awareness Month, month of October.
We do have Lynn from CORA here to accept the proclamation.
Lynn, thank you. Would you like to make a statement, please?
Pardon?
Would you like to make a statement, a comment?
I would.
Thank you.
So mayor, vice mayor, council, city staff, guests, I would like to thank you for inviting us and for providing a proclamation in support of the domestic violence work that we do in San Mateo County. Want to highlight a couple of statistics that you mentioned. One is the fact that one in three women in their lifetime will experience some form of domestic violence. So when you look in any room, this room or any room you go to, at work, at school, think of that number, and one in four men. We don't often talk about that, but I'll assure you that we get many phone calls from men who are experiencing violence as well. So I want to thank you for inviting me to come here and highlight this. And I also want to mention for anybody who's here or maybe watching on video, our phone number is 1-800-300-1080. You can call that number any hour of any day. And what we can unlock for somebody who's fleeing domestic violence is everything from that domestic violence phone call, asking for help, to housing and everything in between, including mental health services, legal services. And we also provide prevention work. In fact, this year, we've worked with a lot of cities. I think we talked to Half Moon Bay, we hope to get you on this list as well, to provide prevention and work with our local city businesses to let them know with a very quick presentation, what is domestic violence? What are the red flags? And what do you do when you see it? Because a lot of folks, they may see something that looks suspicious, but they're not really sure, and they don't really know what to do. So if that's an interesting point for Half Moon Bay, we would love to welcome you to the Speak Up program. And beyond that, again, just really want to emphasize that we're here for all residents throughout the county, including the coast. I'm a coastal resident, so I know that it's important to have services here as well. That phone number to call us and get services again is 1-800-300-1080. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to our mayor's announcements. The only announcement is our punkin festival. We have it, yeah. Really looking forward to the punkin festival this year. Unfortunately, last year I could not attend. I came down with COVID. Looking forward to this year, October 19th, and the October 20th. Please join us at the punkin festival here in Half Moon Bay. And that is my only announcement. Report from our close sessions?
Thank you, mayor, council, and community. The council did meet in closed session this evening prior to this regular meeting to discuss two items. The first was a real conference with a real property negotiator regarding the 555 Kelly Avenue property. Direction was provided, nothing to report out on that item. Also, a conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, the matter of Megan Gass versus City of Half Moon Bay. Direction was provided, nothing to report out. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager updates?
Mr. Mayor, we have three updates tonight. We'll start with Karen Decker.
Great, thank you, Matthew, and good evening, mayor, council, and community. Karen Decker, Economic and Community Vitality Manager. I'm here to share a very exciting update, and that is the College of San Mateo is officially opening their Coastside Educational Facility next month. It's gonna take place on Thursday, October 17th. It starts at 4 o'clock. And they're going to have the ribbon cutting at their new facility located at 650 Mill Street. It's right on the corner of Mill and Parisima. It's a brand-newly constructed building, and they will have limited space. Some of the programming may be indoor or outdoor, so if you are interested in attending, they highly encourage you to RSVP. There's a URL on the slide, but for anybody who may be listening, it's collegeofsanmateo.edu/CoSide. I also brought some flyers here in English and Spanish to help spread the word. But the college site will have career and transfer tracks. It will offer coursework. It will have academic counseling and language advancement, and basically a full suite of student services. So I just want to thank the College of San Mateo leadership for responding to CoSide's call for access and equity and for really making that dream a reality. Happy to take any questions. Oh, sure. It's Thursday, October 17th, and it starts at 4:00.
Karen, this is a wonderful thing. I'm really glad. They were here a while ago, went away. Now, we finally have CSM on the coast. It's gonna really help our coast side enormously, so thank you for getting involved in this.
Oh, thank you for supporting the Coastside Recovery Initiative and for the task force for recommending it. And like I say to the staff there, it's not a welcome, it's a welcome back. So, thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen. Next up is Maggie Rodriguez.
Hello, council. Maggie Rodriguez, the Assistant City Clerk, and I'm here to talk about Elections Night Out. Wednesday, October 30th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Half Moon Bay Library, we will be hosting Elections Night Out. If you're not familiar, this is an event that we have put on once California transitioned to mail-in ballots. We noticed that the community might be missing the going-to-the-polls feeling, so we decided to create and host this event every year during election years to have the community come together like they would do when they would go out in the polls before. We just want to let everyone know it's a community event, so children are welcome. It's family-friendly. We'll be having food and some fun little coloring books and future voter stickers to get the youth involved and excited for future elections. If you have any questions, it's just a quick little plug for the event.
Any questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Our final announcement I will make. Two meetings ago, I think it was two meetings ago, maybe three, we had representatives from Seton Coastside come and talk about the work that they're doing to remodel and refurbish their facilities. And as part of the discussion at that meeting, our council really wanted to host some sort of community workshop or open house to really talk more about healthcare access and urgent care opportunities here on the coast. And I'm very excited to announce a hold the date with more information coming for what we're gonna call a community conversation on healthcare access and urgent care on the coast. It'll be hosted by the Age Friendly Initiative, led by our senior center and some of our community leaders. That's a coalition of nonprofit, city, county, MidCoast Community Council, and community representation. It'll be a chance to learn more and talk about healthcare options and needs on the coast, efforts to improve access for everyone, and steps the community can take to promote and work towards more access and services for everybody. So that event will be held on Tuesday, October 29th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Oceano Hotel in Princeton. And more details will come as the planning moves forward. But we really, this is for every person on the coast, whether you have insurance, whether it's Kaiser Insurance or Blue Shield, or you're on a county healthcare plan, or you don't have insurance at all. This is really for everybody. We are trying to find ways to create more access to better services for everybody here on the coast when it comes to healthcare. So please, share this, save the date. As we get more information, let people know about it, because without buy-in from the community, we can't move this initiative forward. So we really need a good showing on the 29th and lots of support from the communities we move forward. So thanks to Councilmember Rarback and Councilmember Penrose for really leading this effort and pushing this along. And we're grateful to the Oceano Hotel, who is donating their space for this really, really important community event. So, thank you. And Mr. Mayor, that's the end of our updates.
Thank you. Public forum? Do you have any cards for public forum? No? Going once, going twice? All right, thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar. Anybody should put in one of the items? Putting one D? Any of the item on the agenda? Okay, we'd like to make a motion.
I move that we accept waiving reading of resolutions and ordinances, that we respond to San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury Report, quote, "Restaurant exteriors, the neglected space." That we respond to San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury Report, quote, "The state of composed compliance in San Mateo County." That we amend the part?
No, we pull that.
Wrong. A second?
Second.
Only in favor?
I.
A opposed? Approve.
Do you want to do one D now?
Yeah, I think that's fine. John Doughty's coming to the podium as he is spearheading this item.
I guess I'll ask, is there a specific question or I can run through?
Yeah, I mean, I really love the idea and I support the idea. I do think, however, that the youth members should be non-voting. I think it takes time to understand the work and what the issues are. And I see it mainly as a learning experience and a grooming experience. It just seems to me to be inappropriate for them to also be additional voting members, so I would just recommend, ask for your support for at least eliminating, making them advisory as opposed to voting members.
Yeah, so I'm only in favor to actually have our high school students to be part of our commissions. I think it's a way for them to learn the process of the work we do here at the city. But again, I do agree with, you know, with Councilmember Debbie, Reddick, about giving them the power to vote. You know, especially at that age, at the age of 14, I mean, right now, as we are, we have, you know, commissioners who have experience, who are adults about our community, about the city. Like I said, I'm in favor of having the students be part of the commissions, except I'm not in favor of giving them, you know, the power to vote. I think that should be later, you know, as they get more experience. And the other thing, I would prefer if they were seniors. You know, I believe, you know, 14-year-old freshman will be, in my opinion, is too young to be part of a commission. A senior with more experience, more focused on what they would like to do after high school, and knowledge about the community will be more fit, you know, to be part of any commission.
May I give some, a little context from the evolution of this?
Yes, please.
I will say, I, staff primarily working with the commission on this, had landed exactly where the recommendation is landing, which is that I did not assume that this would be a voting member or members. When I dug, and I initially found a lot of communities that said they were ex officio non-voting. What research continued to identify, though, is more and more that said they have the right to participate. The commission took this up about three different times, I think three different times we talked about it. And their last point, they were very adamant that they felt like this was the gateway into understanding civic engagement. And without the right to vote, and without the right to fully participate, and even serve as a member of the leadership, that they were only partial members and only half-members. I will say that Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee, this council approved a youth member to that committee several years ago. And that person continues, whoever's appointed that, has the ability to vote and participate actively to that. I think the big issue and the reason why I kind of, as staff, and my recommendation came around to the idea of the voting is the Parks and Rec Commission generally works on a consensus basis, much like the Bike Pedestrian. They are making no final decisions. They are making only recommendations to the council. I would not suggest putting probably youth members with full voting authority on the Planning Commission, because they have final authority. There's a lot more that goes into that issue. And there is a need probably for more than a year at a time kind of experience and knowledge base there. So that's how this ended up, and I'll say I kind of evolved with the commission a bit on the idea that without that right to vote, it was sort of only a half of an honor and a civic engagement opportunity.
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I kind of agree with the Parks and Recs Commission. But more importantly, I think it's, I would take their word for what they want. And if they want voting members to be young, 14-year-olds to be able to vote, I'm happy with that. So I would go along with their recommendation.
It's actually, for me, be more...
It's actually, for me, it'd be more having an advisory group, you know, for high school students. We can actually have a, like a committee of high school students that would advise the Parks and Rec Commission. It makes more sense to me. And that doesn't give them a voting power. Yeah, but it gives them the advising power, that they can be, attend the meetings and actually, like I said, make recommendations, but not to vote.
Vice Mayor?
I agree with Councilmember Penrose. I think if we're going to trust 14-year-olds, then we should really trust them, give them voting rights. As you said, Parks and Rec usually works by consensus anyway. And I think we owe it to our youth to say that we have enough confidence that they should be voting members. So I will support the consent item. Thank you.
I move that we accept the consent item as written.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedros?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhabak?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
No.
No she cares.
Can I get a motion to, no, we're good? We move it on to... Resolutions and staff reports. Three A.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be making a presentation tonight and I'm happy to answer any questions. Of course, this item is a follow-up to several meetings we've had regarding the potential pilot use of automated license plate readers, ALPRs. I'm going to say that for the rest of the night in Half Moon Bay. A little bit of background, next slide, please. We've covered this quite a bit, but I do want to provide a little bit of context, although we don't have public in the audience, so I think I can move quickly through it. We know that ALPR technology uses cameras and software to scan license plates to compare those numbers against the plates of stolen vehicles or vehicles associated with crimes or individuals wanted on criminal charges. When a match is found, an alert is generated, allowing law enforcement to respond to that location. The ALPR data can also be used by investigators after a crime has been committed to identify and locate the associated vehicles to a crime. Flock Group Incorporated is a leading manufacturer and operator of ALPR systems, and they work with most jurisdictions in San Mateo County. Actually, Pacifica, two weeks ago, adopted their pilot program. And of course, the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office uses them extensively. So tonight, we do have Captain Richard Chichov here to answer any questions from the sheriff's point of view. And we have representatives from Flock online who can also answer technical questions. A little bit of background. We first explored use of ALPRs in Half Moon Bay in 2019, but community and council concerns about privacy, data security, and other challenges caused us to hold off. And since then, things have really evolved. And most cities, as I mentioned, in San Mateo County, the Bay Area, are now using ALPR technology and have demonstrated success in their use. And that includes the sheriff's office, as you heard in the annual report last meeting. Earlier this year, the council asked to learn more about this evolution that's happened since 2019. And we've held several meetings, done some outreach to the community, met with specific parties, including the ACLU and members of our community, researched the issue and best practices. And in June, held a workshop where council ultimately directed us to bring this pilot program forward tonight. Next slide, please. So the pilot program we're proposing includes 16 ALPR units in seven locations, which I'll show a little bit later, at a cost of just over $100,000 over the next two years. Payment for this program would come from our COPS grant, which is not part of the city's general fund, so it would have no impact on the city's current financial situation. This grant is for enhanced law enforcement and public safety services and would allow us to assess long-term its value to us as a community. Per council request, we have prepared a usage and privacy policy based on best practices and feedback we've gotten. And we'll talk a little bit about those details later. And as part of that, there would be annual data audits at least. I think we would initially do more data audits to make sure that the data being collected meets our expectations and annual reports that I would say would coincide with the sheriff's annual report each year. Next slide, please. So, under the ALPR policy, there are, and I lost some things here. This is an overview of authorized uses, which we think is very, very important. Most of it is pretty intuitive. It's for authorized law enforcement use only, to respond to emergencies, to locate stolen vehicles, and to apprehend people that are suspected in a crime. They can be used to locate missing children and adults and individuals. And as we've heard, ALPRs have been effective at helping deal with mental health crises, especially as commonplace here. Often, people come to the coast with a plan to harm themselves, and those have been resolved through the use of ALPRs. Next slide, please. I think more importantly in the policy is identifying unauthorized uses. And the list is here. Obviously, harassment or intimidation of individuals and groups is not acceptable. It would only be, or I'm sorry, prohibited uses would include any personal purpose. Does not matter how justified it feels. There are no personal use of this data allowed. We would not be allowed, or the sheriff's office would not be allowed, to utilize ALPR data to infringe on First Amendment rights of any person or to support or assist in immigrant enforcement or prosecution, which was a major concern raised by the community, or for the investigation or legal proceedings against any person exercising their reproductive health rights, whether they're from California or outside of California. And additionally, another unauthorized use is to record license plates for anything that you wouldn't expect to be recorded, so outside of the public view, private property and such. ALPR data, so we have the benefit of a local community member who is an expert in data privacy and security. And she attended one of the previous meetings and I met with her subsequent to that, as she had offered her expertise. And she provided a pretty comprehensive list of things that, expectations of how the data would be encrypted, how it would be managed. We've compared that list to commitments from Flock, and their work meets and exceeds all of those expectations when it comes to encryption, firewalls, and authentication, password protection, those types of things. ALPR data would remain in the cloud under those specialized protections unless it was going to be used as evidence for a crime, after which it could be downloaded and password-protected, but would still need to be protected in the same way as the cloud-based data. Access would only be by law enforcement with very specific conditions. Again, there has to be suspicion of a crime, that there's evidence here that could support prosecution of a crime or for targeting stolen vehicles, as described earlier. Third-party sharing, meaning other agencies, including law enforcement agencies, would be extremely restricted as well, with very specific conditions. And anything that's retained but not identified as evidence would be purged completely after 30 days and not recoverable after that, which I know was an important time limitation from the community. And then there would be very specific and required training about how to use this data, how it can be used, and data protection practices. I'll also share that in that policy, there's specific language that was added based on feedback we got from several of you and from community members about best practices. I'll point to the city of Palo Alto, who attended one of our previous meetings. They have a very, very robust policy and requirements that they have initiated. And we made sure that every identified point in their policies found their way into our ALPR policy as a best practice. So we're very comfortable that the policy we put together here meets and exceeds the expectations of many of our community members, including the recommendations we received from the ACLU. What we have here is a map of some of the locations of ALPR cameras. These would always be publicly posted and notified. We're not trying to hide these things and trick people. This is going to be public information throughout the pilot period. As you can see here, we identified the intersection of Main and Highway 1 and the intersection of Main and 92 as crucial. I will share, I think we know this, but the sheriff is already utilizing ALPR technology outside of Half Moon Bay on the coast side. And so Highways 92, Highway 1, North and South are already being captured. And our focus here was really to identify hotspots where crimes might be committed, and crimes have been committed in the past, to support law enforcement in a swift response. Next slide. Additional location that we identified was the intersection of Main and Kelly, as it is an access point to our downtown and to our state beach. Next slide, please. The entrance, or actually, the exit to Poplar Street. The Poplar Beach parking lot was identified as a place that this information could be utilized if we had issues with vandalism parties and other issues at our beach, at our main beach. The intersection of Highway 1 and Main on the south end. Next slide, please. Redondo Beach Road, oh, that got cut off a little bit. We have Wavecrest Road and Highway 1, as well as Redondo Beach Road. Again, major access points we've identified as hotspots for not-good activity, especially late at night. And so that's, again, 16 ALPR units at seven locations throughout the city over a two-year period. And so our recommendation tonight is to, number one, approve our pilot program at these specified locations within Half Moon Bay, to adopt the draft policy that was proposed within the packet tonight. Next slide. To authorize myself to negotiate and execute an amendment of our agreement with the County of San Mateo to include ALPR implementation and all the requirements that go with that in our contract. And to authorize myself to negotiate and execute an agreement with Flock for the installation and maintenance of these ALPR units. Attached to the staff report was a high-level draft of that agreement that needs to be finalized based on the feedback we get from you tonight. So again, we have representatives from Flock and Captain Chichov here to answer questions if they arise.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions?
No comment.
No questions? We have a few comments.
I agree with the ACLU that these ALPRs are not really that helpful. I've made this point before. I'm not, I don't take issue with the exact implementation that's being proposed, but from my point of view, the $100,000,000 that we're getting from the COPS grant could be much better used for public safety things like community service officers, civilian people that deal with traffic, lots of other better uses of $100,000,000. So I'm not opposed to the implementation. I just think that the money could be better spent in other ways for public safety. Thank you.
I'd actually like to propose a slight modification, but one that I think is, would have a, you know, beneficial impact potentially. I really appreciate the ACLU's input, especially on First Amendment protections. But it's occurred to me, you know, looking at current events, especially the last few years, that the First Amendment seems to be challenged increasingly as a problem in our democracy. And not just free expression, but protests on certain issues. For instance, you know, the issue of Gaza and Israel. So what I'd like to do is modify the language slightly about First Amendment to actually call out free expression, but also the right of assembly. Because I'm concerned about what we're doing in this country to protesters, you know. Free expression is more than just an individual enjoying free speech. It also applies to groups, and it also is related to freedom of assembly. So I want to call out both free speech or freedom of expression, but also the right of assembly, to actually call them out specifically as protections.
Sure. I just want to make sure I'm clear. So this would go into the policy under the prohibited uses of this information to just get more clarity on that one line there.
Yeah, to clarify what we mean by First Amendment. Because it's actually many things. It's free expression, it's right to petition, it's right of assembly. But it seems to me that freedom of expression is under attack in this country, not just as individual free speech, whether it's online or whatever, but also when people assemble to protest together and have their own free speech as a group. So I want us to actually call out, you know, whether it's inclusive of or including but not limited to, you know, freedom of expression, the right to assemble, you know, for groups and individuals.
I don't see any problem with adding that language. It does make me, I just want to think through this. So scenarios are a good way to do that. So there's a protest in our downtown at the intersection of Main and Kelly. And, you know, unfortunately, we've seen terrible acts in those types of situations. Someone with a vehicle goes and commits a heinous crime and then drives off. I would assume that that wouldn't apply to that person. It's more a person that attends a rally and then goes and gets in their car and leaves. We're not using this data to go and figure out who they were.
We're not using this data to identify protesters or to track protesters. You know, that we, that the right to privacy includes, you know, all elements of the First Amendment. And I think it's important to call it out, because we do have assemblies at Kelly and Highway 1 and Main Street and Highway 1 and 92 and Main Street. You know, whether it's, you know, promoting a candidate, it's protesting on an issue. And I want to make sure that there's clear understanding about what we mean when we say First Amendment.
Sure. And I think we meant to be all-inclusive, so being really specific, I couldn't imagine is a challenge.
Yeah, but I really appreciate the diligence that staff and the council has put into evaluating the issue. I think we've come up with a good, good policy. I think it's protective, it has input from the key stakeholders. And I think it's a, it's a great idea to have this pilot, and so I support it.
So it could be language as simple as, you know, for number two, the usage and privacy policy that, you know, no information gathered as part of the ALPR pilot program. Oh. Okay. Could be simple language as part of number two, Half Moon Bay City ALPR usage and privacy policy, that no information gathered as part of the ALPR pilot program shall be used to infringe on anyone's First Amendment rights to free speech and assembly, something like that? Okay.
Any other comments? No. Well, my part, at first I was, you know, when first it was presented to us, I was a bit skeptical. It was the same thing, same reason about a specific community was going to be targeted by these cameras. But now I can see the benefit of having implemented a pilot program, you know, for our public safety. Something that, you know, Matthew, you mentioned. Other cities, San Mateo, Pacifica, implementing as the same. the same programs, and we will be, Half Moon Bay will be the only community, the only city, that will be disconnected, and that can make us a target. So now, you know, the opportunity to implement a program like this, even to the cost of a hundred and eight thousand dollars, is still worth, you know, for the, for the safety of our community. So I'm in, all in favor, and thank you for making those changes, the language to implement a program like this. Can we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve item 3A. Item one, approve the two-year automated license plate readers pilot program at specified locations within Half Moon Bay. Two, adopt the City of Half Moon Bay ALPR usage and privacy policy as amended. Item three, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an amendment of the Agreement for Law Enforcement Services with the County of San Mateo to implement the use of ALPR technology in Half Moon Bay. And four, authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with FLOC Group Inc. for the installation and maintenance of 16 ALPR units and associated software, equipment, and support services for a period of two years at a cost not to exceed a hundred and eight thousand nine hundred dollars.
Second.
How about Rocco, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barback?
No.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Rocha Carres?
Thank you. Should we take a break? Everybody good for a break? Let's come back. Want to go?
Would anyone like a break? That's okay, if they do.
Would anybody like to break? Actually, I'm going to take my break, that's what I'm saying. I want to give you the opportunity to take your break.
I second that.
All right, I'm going to recuse from the following item. Please send me a message, I'll be outside when you're ready for me to come back. Thank you. I'll take my break.
This item is a Job Train contract amendment, and we need a staff report?
Yeah, we have Karen Decker here to make a brief report with some comments from our city attorney.
Hello again, Karen Decker, Economic and Community Vitality Manager. I'm here this evening to ask council's consideration on an amendment to a professional services agreement with Job Train. Job Train is in contract with the city to provide employment services out of the Opportunity Center of the Coast Side. For anybody who may be listening online who's less familiar, the Opportunity Center is a first-of-its-kind service center that serves job seekers and entrepreneurs on the coast. It's home to our first incubator to accelerator, and it's home to our chamber. There are four service providers who operate out of the Opportunity Center. This center is funded by a grant from San Mateo County, and that agreement between the city and the county was to expire at the end of September of this year, and consequently, all of those four service provider contracts would expire as well. So on September 17th, at the last convening of the city council, council authorized the city to amend our agreement with the county to extend that contract term through September 30th of 2025. You also approved contract extensions for three of the four service providers. Job Train was initially included as part of that batch of service providers, but more time was requested in order to look into a potential conflict of interest. That time has passed, and our city attorney has developed a legal opinion, so I will go ahead and turn it over to our city attorney, Catherine.
Great, thank you, Karen, and members of council. Yes, so included in the staff report for this item is a legal opinion regarding Mayor Jimenez's interest in the contract. So what the council directed me to look into, and I actually originally requested advice from the FPPC, that's the Fair Political Practices Commission, which issues advice on conflicts of interest, including conflicts arising under contracts such as this one, under Government Code Section 1090, and other aspects of the Political Reform Act. Unfortunately, I, after requesting the advice, I was told that they actually are not in a position to offer advice on this particular matter, because it's considered a past action, because Mayor Jimenez is already employed by Job Train, which is the entity proposing to, that the city is proposing to contract with. So instead, I went ahead and did the research, and the results of that research is in the attached legal opinion. Bottom line is that the city may enter into the agreement with Job Train so long as Mayor Jimenez fully recuses from the decision, specifically discloses his interest to the city council, the interest is noted in the official records, and recuses from the vote, and really in anything involving the contracting process. I'll just note for the record that his interest is noted in the official records, given the staff report and the attached legal opinion. And so with that, I'll just see if there are any, any questions about the research that I did, or anything that Karen presented.
I move that we authorize the city manager, oh.
I have questions.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, at what point will we get reports back from the three entities at the Opportunity Center on their successes? And, you know, with, with the money that's gone out, even though it's not our money, it's county money going out, how that's been spent?
Yes, so we actually require quarterly reports from all of the service providers, and they've been very astute to turn those in on time. We just wrapped up a quarter right now, so I expect new reports in the upcoming week. We then go and turn those reports into the county, who also has their own reporting requirements, so I'm satisfied that the evaluation process is rigorous. In addition to that, the city procured a grant from Chance Zuckerberg Initiative to conduct an in-depth program evaluation of all three economic centers, South San Francisco, the Coast Side, and North Fair Oaks. That contract is underway by a consulting firm called Head &amp; Heart Advisory, and I'm very excited to come back to council and share some of those dashboards, some of that data. At the last meeting of the city council, I know we were missing two council members, but we actually had executive leadership from all of the service providers give a report out on progress to date, and we actually had some compelling client stories as well. So happy to do that again in another couple of quarters, but if there's any other specifics, I'm happy to chat about it anytime, but I'm confident the data is there and that good services are being provided.
Great, thank you.
We have a motion, please?
Start it, I'll finish. Move that we authorize the city manager to amend the professional services agreement with Job Train for employment services at the Opportunity Center by extending the term to September 30th, 2025, for a contract amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barback?
Yes.
Rocha Carres?
Mr. Mayor, for this upcoming item, if I could just provide a little bit of context, because again, we had a few council members not present at the last meeting. Our meeting two weeks ago, during public comment, a gentleman that lives in Cypress Cove got up and spoke about his concerns about the condition of the Main Street Bridge, specifically the pedestrian paths that run on either side of it, that act as the sidewalk between, you know, the north end of Main Street and the south end of Main Street, and risks of, you know, trip and fall and a lack of ADA accessibility. And so at the end of the meeting, council directed staff to put together a plan and bring it back. The good news was, we were already working on this, and, and so we have Todd Seeley, our Public Works Superintendent, here tonight to present on this, and really present some options and some recommendations, and then get your feedback, and of course, our city Public Works Director and City Engineer, Oz Potoguini. So, Todd, please.
Thank you, Matthew. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council, good evening, and thank you. There we go. Thank you for having me here with you this evening. As Matthew mentioned, we're here to talk about the Main Street Bridge and some options. We have a very brief PowerPoint presentation. Really, this is going to be more about the discussion aspect of it. We want to hear your guys' thoughts and opinions on what direction to move forward on, so we'll get through this PowerPoint pretty quickly, and then we will start the discussion on the Main Street Bridge. This is just a couple shots of the existing condition. Obviously, it's a little worn and in need of some repair. The Main Street Bridge was originally constructed in 1900. It is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The walkways have begun to show signs of wear. After discussing with the city engineer and Matthew, we have the four primary areas of concern identified as the east side walkway, the wooden bridge railings, the bridge stucco, and the west side walkway. And these four options are listed in the order of priority that we have identified. So obviously, the east side walkway is the most pressing issue and the one that we are going to need to address first. And other issues, such as structural issues underneath the bridge itself, we're going to address that at a later time. These are just a couple pictures of the east side walkway. As you can see, there's some nails that have been bent, some gaps in the, in the decking itself that are unsafe for pedestrians. The wood railings, just a little bit of separation there. The wood railings also don't meet code height requirements, and they need additional lumber to decrease the gaps in there, so that someone couldn't fall through, a child, something like that. The stucco is probably the most expensive part of this project. It's just worn. Again, the bridge was built in 1900. It's fared pretty well for something that's 124 years old, but obviously, it does need a facelift and some paint, so that is the third part of this. I did not include any pictures of the west side walkway. It's in a slightly better shape than the east side walkway, just a little slightly different dimension of lumber as well, too. We can get into that in the discussion later, but it does need to be repaired. So our recommendations after we have our discussion would be to receive direction from the city council on the creation of a maintenance program to begin addressing Main Street Bridge maintenance and accessibility needs, and to adopt a resolution amending the FY 2425 to FY 2829 capital budget by adding a new project entitled Main Street Bridge Maintenance Project as a funded programmed project for FY 2425, and amending the FY 2425 capital budget by allocating up to $200,000 from the general fund to allow work to begin on this project immediately. And with that, I will turn it over to the council for any questions and to start the discussion.
If I could just add a little bit of my own commentary. A couple of things, and again, because we had some council members absent last week, we received some good news. It's, I want to cautiously say good news, but we also had our fourth quarter annual report from the previous fiscal year, so it was kind of a wrap-up of the last fiscal year. And part of the good news is that our recommended budget and expectations were very conservative, and we ended last fiscal year, still needs to be audited, but it'll be close, in a better position by $3 million. Now, that doesn't fix our ongoing, yes, good work by everybody involved here, everybody in this room. It doesn't resolve our ongoing issues, but what it does is it allows us to draw less on reserves this year, and gives us a little more runway to work out these financial issues in the long term. Because of that, I was very comfortable recommending, rather than reshuffling and eliminating projects, to simply take $200,000 from that newfound fund balance to immediately move this project forward. Parts of this aren't as urgent as others, but that bridge really serves so many different roles. It's an emergency egress route, both on vehicle and on foot. It's a gateway to our downtown and to our community. It's, it's part of our economic development, it's part of our community character, and, you know, I love historic things, and I love crumbling things that are old, but this, I do, but I'm talking thousands of years old. This bridge, we, is something we've been looking at, and we really think if we're going to invest in doing some repairs, we should do it right, and get this bridge back to looking really what it should be as a gateway to our community. And I think at a, at a top end of $200,000, it's a reasonable cost to move this forward. So this really is a recommendation from staff to move this forward, depending on your take on some of the options that we present tonight. Thanks.
Great. I have had personal experience on this bridge. I have tripped twice. The first time I tripped was on a nail head, nail that had come up. The second time, I don't know what I tripped on, but I tripped. I also, at times, have to use a walker, and using a walker on that bridge is close to impossible. It just doesn't move, the walker goes all over the place. So I am very excited about repairing it. I'm also thrilled that when we do the replacement of the flooring on the two walkways, that we're talking about using wood.
Absolutely.
I think that's just brilliant, I think that's what it should be, it's what, what it has been, and it's in keeping with the historic nature of the bridge itself, so I am all for this proposal.
Yes, go ahead.
Are we likely to do a bigger project on the bridge in the near to midterm? I mean, I think a decision that we make now, we want to sort of look ahead a bit, and it's like, is this, should this be a temporary fix, or are we planning anything bigger?
I'll defer to Oz, but based on my conversations with staff, for this portion of the bridge, which is aesthetic and accessibility-related and safety-related, this is, we're not, these are not temporary fixes. They're not permanent fixes, right? Wood is going to wear out over time, but it's, it's really bringing it back up to what it should be. We can talk more about the structural issues below, or potential structural issues, and ways we can start to mitigate those as a separate project, but we think the urgency right now, when we look at that bridge, is really about the safety and the accessibility of the top portion of the bridge. Anything else you want to add to that, Oz?
That was great, Matthew. I can answer any other questions about scour or structural, but yeah, that, that's what I would have stated as well.
Yeah, that clarifies a lot for me, actually. Yeah, I, you know, I think we have to look at the connectivity issue here. So basically, the bridge connects, you know, downtown and the shopping center, and the existing residential development and the future residential development, but it's also going to play a big role in getting people to and from Carter Park, once we start having events there. And once we start really to increase the numbers of people who are using, who are using it, we're increasing the risk, you know, by not fixing it. So I think it's important, it's an important project, I think we should proceed. And I do agree with Deborah, I think it should be wood. I think it should be the redwood, because I don't think we should, eight and a bet, you know, deforestation, you know, in the, the Amazon. So I think California redwood is, is a good solution, not in favor of the composite, even though it certainly would, you know, give us, you know, more useful life and at a reasonable expense, but I think I would support the redwood, you know, and the, the stucco fixes, but we have to make it more accessible and more risk-free, so.
I have three comments. The first is that often the city council is accused of not listening to the public, but the only reason that this agenda item was placed on the agenda was because of the comments of a member from the public who was concerned about the safety of his client going over the bridge and tripping and not having wheelchair accessibility. So this is an example where the public does weigh in, and we do listen to them. The second comment is, I agree that redwood is the best, most historically accurate and aesthetically pleasing way to repair the bridge flooring. And lastly, I don't want to let the structural issues just go by the wayside. And lastly, I don't want to let the structural issues just go by the wayside. I think that there, in the past, has been a suggestion that epoxy could shore up the bridge. The bridge is not going anywhere, but we should make sure that the maintenance of that bridge is not neglected. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. So, you know, we've put a certain amount of time and effort. I remember I started it, and Harvey's picked up it really, on it really nicely, to be, our city to be designated an age-friendly community. And we have that designation. I would say it clearly behooves us to make repairs to a bridge if we're going to call ourselves an age-friendly community. It's almost, yeah. And regarding the material, wood's good. I don't really care what kind of wood it is. We had a bridge temporarily repaired on the coast side, remember, with plywood. That plywood worked great for at least a couple of years. So, and it's smooth, it's nice, really holds up. I'm saying, in terms of the budget, if that's what we need for a couple of years, that's fine, till we get a better grade, get a time to do a little more reinforcement. But I'm just saying, based on that example of just plywood, it made all the difference in the world, and everybody was able to use the bridge again for years, till we literally replaced the whole bridge. You know which bridge I'm talking about on the coast? Trail, coastal trail? I appreciate your comprehension of what I'm saying. So anyhow, yes, I think it's great. I'm glad we're taking action quickly. We're on notice that we have an issue there, and resolving it sooner than later is great. Weather's not going to get any better over the next few months, so we want to be ready for that and get it all cleaned up. So thank you for getting on it right away so quickly. Really appreciate that.
What would the timeline be for the complete project? Just ballpark?
So the X-factor in that would be the stucco. We would actually have to go out to bid or at least get informal bids for that. We're just not capable of doing that work in-house. That's very specialized work. It just depends on the backlog of that. Realistically, the first phase, doing the east side, which connects Half Moon Bay Coffee to the restaurant, I'm drawing a blank on the name of the restaurant. That one. We could, realistically, that'll be done by the end of the year. And then move, as we progress, we can get going. And realistically, doing that and the railings at the same time is probably an option. And concurrently with waiting, either getting the stucco contractor spooled up and ready to go, we could start looking at working on the west side. The plan would be, if approved, we're going to order all of the wood at once, stockpile it at the courtyard. So we have all our supplies and materials ready to go, and then it's just a matter of finding time in the maintenance crew's day to get out there and do it. We know how big of a priority it is, though, and it's definitely going to get bumped to the top of the priority list after Pumpkin Fest is over.
Great. Thank you, Pumpkin.
No comments from me. Motion?
Before we motion, I just, I got, I'm tallying my votes over here. I have two wood is good and two for redwood. So is redwood going to be the option that we're looking to go? Okay.
I think so, yeah. But it comes with redwood.
I move that, having received direction from city council on the creation of a maintenance program to begin addressing Main Street Bridge maintenance and accessible, accessibility needs, and that we adopt a resolution amending the FY 202425 to FY 202829 CIP by adding a new project entitled Main Street Bridge Maintenance Project as a funded programmed project for FY 2024 through 25, and amending the FY 2024 through 25 capital budget by allocating up to $200,000 from the general fund to allow work to begin on this project immediately.
Second?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Sold.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Move on to the next item, 3D, commissions, committee's appointment, appointment progress.
Thank you. I'm just going to give Maggie a second to open our PowerPoint. So this item is before you, in response to some feedback we received from the community and past applicants over the past few years and in discussion with various council members to sort of button up our process for commission and committee appointments to make it more transparent and clear to the community. And so we have put together a couple of different options based on best practices around San Mateo County and throughout the state. And so we want to just present those to the council, have you all discuss, and then direct us as to what policy you would like to move forward with. And then we will return at the next meeting with a resolution formalizing that policy. Is it loaded? Yeah? Oh, there it goes. Okay. So option one is essentially status quo, but just a little more formalized. Each council member would continue to review applications if they have an open seat. We would require that, or the policy would require that only applications submitted by the posted deadline could be considered. The council members would interview their top three candidates, and preference should be given to district residents when possible, but we realize that may not always be possible. And then the top candidate and the candidate that that council member is suggesting nominating to be appointed would then be interviewed by the full council at the appointment meeting, and we would develop some form questions that would be asked of each candidate. Option two would be forming a subcommittee that would then make recommendations to the council on the appointments. This could consist of the mayor, mayor and vice mayor, and whichever year, the subcommittee would review and interview all candidates and then make recommendations to the full council for any of the open vacancies. And then option three is pretty similar to option one, but it would require a by-district appointment. And then, secondly, we've added our two policy language blurbs to consider. The first is an anti-nepotism policy, essentially requiring that any spouse or, you know, parent, child, et cetera, could not be related to a member of the council, be employed by the city in one of the executive positions. And then term limits would be that members of the bodies would serve at the pleasure of the council, but that they would run for the four years, but no more than two terms. So conclusion, these are some options to consider, and we're just looking for feedback from the council as to your thoughts and how you would like us to move forward.
Yeah, I like option one. Can you put that up again? With the exception of the last bullet point, I think the way the system works now is just fine. I think that if we want to appoint someone to the planning commission, we're doing that because we believe that their policy, policies and their points of view are consistent with the council members. And so I don't see any reason for the entire council to be interviewing anybody else's candidate. The other thing, I think, I'm not sure about term limits. My thinking is that it should be up to the council member to fire the planning commissioner that they have appointed if they're not pleased with the way that planning commissioner is holding forth and apply, and appoint someone else. That's my point of view.
First of all, I have a real problem that this item is before us tonight. I don't know why it's here. Normally, when we have something on the agenda, it's because at the end of a regular meeting, the council has voted to direct staff to bring forth an item for discussion at a future meeting, which has not been done here. So this looks staff-initiated, and honestly, with a policy like this, I have a problem with it. I have a problem with the timing. You know, we're in the middle of an election cycle. There are politics around the planning commission that I know that people aren't happy with right now, and I think this is targeted at that. So I just have a real problem with the entire item being before us tonight. So that said, I think that the current system we have now works just fine. People need to understand what the planning commission function is. In fact, the council delegates its planning function to the planning commission. So it makes sense that for me to be accountable to the voters, I appoint someone who is in line with my policy, based on my interpretation of what the voters want. Not to have some subcommittee look at that, that's not accountable in my mind. So I think the system works fine right now. I agree with Deborah, eliminating that last bullet. I'm against term limits, and I'm against the nepotism policy, because that looks to me, again, like, you know, there's something going on there behind the scenes because of local politics right now. I can't imagine somebody appointing their wife to the planning commission. I think if fellow council members have a problem with somebody appointing a family member, they can bring that up, and it can be discussed and dealt with. But to be fully accountable, I think the system we have right now works just fine. And I would say in the future, for something like this, I think it needs to come to the council, you know, as a matter of information, and then we can discuss it at future agenda items. I have a whole problem with this process and this item here before us tonight.
I agree with the two Debbies. I think the way we have it works fine. I think the word "districting" that you see in all the three options should be removed. I think "districting" is a disservice to our community. I don't think that we should be compelled to appoint somebody from our district, because we're a small city and we have common interests, so I don't want to be constrained. And I agree with Councilmember Ruddock that term limits are not appropriate for us. If somebody is not performing, then the council member has the right to fire him or her. And I'm a little unsure about the anti-nepotism. I can see it going either way. But I definitely think that option one, without the suggestion that either the appointee has to be from the same district, and also, I don't necessarily think that makes a lot of sense to have the interview in public. As long as the council member is, has said what the candidates that he or she has interviewed, and the willing-to-serv forms are online, which they are, I think that serves the purpose of transparency, and we don't need anything in addition. Thank you.
I agree that there should be no preferences given to district residents, just because we have enough trouble getting enough qualified candidates sometime. And I agree that I think folks appointed to the planning commission would take interest of the kind of issues they have more often than not are not necessarily district-specific, and that their considerations would apply throughout the city in making sure we don't set precedents that are hard to follow. I think that, now, actually, I'd love to have that nice set of questions if I'm interviewing someone, and you've, that's an offer there, to put together a good set of questions. I think any council member interviewing candidates could benefit from a good set of questions. That never hurts to give some good guidelines. And the whole bit about having everybody interviewed by the council, it's kind of an incomplete thought to me. So if everyone was interviewing each candidate, well, then what? I mean, I'm not sure I understand how that would work. Does the rest of the council then say, yeah, we've interviewed this person, and this is our recommendation versus the council member? It just felt incomplete to me, what happens with the results of that interviewing. So although I love the idea of having a great set of interviewing questions generally, it was a little bit unclear. And I, what else did I like? I like focusing on what I like. So, yeah, and I don't like term limits. It, again, when you don't always have a lot of candidates, and it takes usually one term for a new person to get a handle on what's going on, them having the benefits of other experienced folks, I think is good. And as Deborah, Councilmember Penrose, said, council member can always get rid of somebody if they feel they're not performing in a way that they seem as responsible and accountable. And I am actually fully supportive of an anti-nepotism policy. I think generally, it's a good idea. It avoids what could seem like conflicts of interest. I don't think it's a huge burden on council members' discretion not to appoint family members. So on the other side of it, I think it's a good, it actually is a good appearance when people don't appoint their family members. So might be, feel limiting to some folks, but I don't think it is. So actually, I like that. So that's it. Maybe we don't really have a decision here to choose any of these options tonight. But I appreciate the staff input on this anyway, and figuring out what some of the best practices are. I just don't think those practices necessarily fit our community here.
Yeah, I kind of don't get where the anti-nepotism policy idea came from. I find it a little bit uncomfortable, because we currently have someone running for office who is related to someone who is currently on the planning commission. I don't think that this policy would necessarily apply to either of them, but I don't want ever to give the impression that we are aiming our policy at anybody who's running for election. It feels uncomfortable to me. I'd also really be interested in how many other cities actually have an anti-nepotism policy.
So I hear a couple of different questions, and apologies, I have a head cold, so my brain's a little foggy, and I might not be speaking as clear. First, we've been looking at this since about January. Maggie's been pulling different, different policies from different cities across the state and in San Mateo County. We've been talking to different clerks about, you know, what works best, what doesn't work best, why they came up with some of the policies that they did. And we had mentioned last winter that we would kind of be looking at policies throughout the year and come back in September or October to hammer down a policy before the election. A lot of the cities that have the term limits, what they had said is that with the councils that don't have term limits, this allowed an opportunity, the public, the public is able to continue electing a council member into office, but they're not given any input as to the commissioners that council member appoints. So for those cities, it was being able to refresh those seats and kind of keep new, fresh perspectives on the different commissions. The anti-nepotism policies, most of the cities did have those, and they said that it was purely to prevent optics of conflicts of interest and things like that. It was done in a way to protect council members and to protect commissioners from being accused of any conflicts of interest and things like that. So, and then the interviewing, what I meant to say was that at the meetings where we make appointments, right, and it's either the two or the three council members, sometimes none, that are recommending appointments, the person that the council member is recommending would come to the podium, and each, like, each planning commission appointee candidate would answer the same, say, two or three questions, just because the full would answer the same, say, two or three questions, just because the full council is asked to confirm the candidate, right? So they would just answer some, the same kind of two or three questions, just to give the full council a little more information before they make their decision on whether to confirm the nominee.
Well, I want to clarify, but in that, when you say confirm, in a process like that, if council member A nominates somebody, that person gets interviewed by the other council member, and the other council members say, "Well, you know, we're not crazy about the way this person answers those questions," does that mean the council member A can't appoint that person? That's the part that was unclear to me, that the process is not at all clear on how that happens. Is there a vote? Is there, it's just, seems unclear to me.
I mean, I, yeah, that's why the full council votes on each appointee. I mean, even if without the interview, the council could vote no to not confirm that appointment, right? But I think it just provides an extra level of transparency to the community and to the rest of the council members to make an informed vote.
Right, that's true. The council has to confirm each appointee anyway. That's true. Okay. That answers that question. Thanks.
Anybody else? It's a tough decision, actually, to make, you know, any, any of the options. I think, you know, I'm more interested in maybe creating a committee, you know, that actually that would now be related to the, to the council members, to decide who will be the planning commissions. That way, you know, it would be out of our hands to decide, you know, who to appoint through applications, and it will be this committee that will look into their applications and interview, you know, the commissioners. I mean, as it is, it is difficult, you know, to find commissioners that will do a good job, you know, for us. It is very difficult. Not a lot of people have the knowledge and the time to be part of the commission. But, you know, having a, a committee, you know, creating a committee that can actually make these decisions for us, I'm more interested in that. If we could look into it, and they would make decisions with the information that you have found, you know, the research from other, other cities, how they go about deciding who's going to be a commissioner by anti-nepotism in the policy, you know, leave it out of our hands. And it's just because of the same reason, you know, going to, you know, for us to decide, you know, especially during election time, it's, it is uncomfortable.
I don't want to take it out of our hands. I want to keep it in our hands. I think we're the elected representatives. We know what policies we support. We know who from the community would be supportive of our policies, and I think the existing system works, and I don't really see any reason to change it.
I agree.
I agree.
Well, if, so what I would suggest is that if the way we've been doing it is what the council wishes to continue to do, direct us to bring back a policy outlining that, because we keep getting asked for the policy by previous applicants and members of the community, and we don't have anything to show them. So really, the whole point of this is to get an actual adopted policy in place, whatever it entails. We were just giving the council some options to discuss, but in any case, we do need to adopt the policy so that it is something we can point to when we are questioned about it.
Is that something that the staff can write up for our, after the discussion tonight, considering the input we've had, and then come back with after the election?
Thank you. Let's have that, have the, this ready for us, you know, after the elections.
Could I just make one clarification?
Yes, please.
We heard a concern that this kind of came out of left field and that staff is driving this. I do want to point out that an issue came up at a previous appointment last year, and there was a discussion that we needed to look at this. It was just a long time ago. There's been communication about this, and the communication was we would bring it back before this election, get it resolved. So it's not out of left field, it's just a long distance between the last time we've talked about it. I'm happy to share some of that with council members after the meeting if they appreciate that. I just want to make sure people don't think that we just made this up out of nowhere. It came from a public discussion and a desire to get, as Jessica said, not anything specific, but something clarified in writing. And all we wanted to do was give you a menu of options, much like we do with our other items, for you to look at and make decisions on. I think we've got some pretty clear direction here tonight on keeping things the way that they are, but getting it into a written policy, which is what we'll move forward with.
Matthew, I think you for clarifying, and it is true. You know, we, there was, we were here in one of the appointees, you know, for the planning commission, and it was questioned about the process to appoint that person. And we did talk about that, you know, having something more solid of how we decide, you know, how do we choose our commissioners? And it came to us now. So, yeah, if we could actually have this back to us after the elections, it would be great. Thank you for the clarification. We have any commissions or committee updates? Future discussion, possible agenda items? Yes?
So, actually, both Harvey and I attended the county's briefing on the unhoused, and what's going on in terms of county policy, and, you know, the numbers countywide. And the coast side is way up in the number of unhoused, and I think I would like to have us invite staff from the county to come out and tailor that briefing to the coast side. And I would include Pacifica, too, because I think that's interesting information. But I think the council needs to hear that, because I think we want to review the county policy. I think they call it hopeful horizons. Was that the name, Harvey, that they talked about? Something like that. And, but it's only going to apply in the unincorporated area, and I think, you know, we're probably going to need a policy, at the very least, for homeless encampments. And so we want to see the county policy, want to be able to ask questions, and we want to chart a path forward, you know, for Half Moon Bay, and maybe do outreach also with the mid-coast to, you know, come up with some solutions, because it's only growing and expected to grow more. So I think we need to get our arms around it as soon as possible. And I know that there's, staff's got a lot on their plates, but I think we need to get that on our radar. I know the city managers and the county have had that briefing as well, so, but I think we all need to hear it.
I agree. One of the suggestions from the county manager was that all the cities adopt the county resolution on how to deal with encampments. It might give us some leverage if we did that to have a real, clear policy on what we need to do with our homeless encampments. And as Councilmember Ruddock said, most of the cities in the county have a declining number of homeless people. We have a rapidly increasing number, and when asked, they didn't know why, and I don't know why either, but we need to deal with it in a humane, but environmentally conscious way. So, yeah, I agree, we should put that on the agenda.
Yeah. And I know that one of the things they're working on is they're mapping trends, and by, what that means is they're, they're trying to find out why people are moving to certain areas. So they're trying to get some answers. You know, part of it may have to do with San Francisco cracking down, or other cities cracking down, and so they're moving in response. So another good reason why we have to look at our own, you know, response, too, so that we're not, you know, shouldering a burden instead of a cooperative effort throughout the county, so.
And that headcount isn't just folks living in encampments, it's folks, right, who are living in their cars and their campers, and people move around depending on where they're banned. So, one, I think it's a great idea, because we, we're in this weird, we're in this no win situation. You got a Supreme Court saying, "Yep, legal to sweep up all your homeless folks." You got a governor who's pushing it, without really money or a blueprint for what the heck you do. So I would think any kind of dialogue on this is going to be useful to, one, educate the public about this catch, no, it's not a catch 22, it is a dilemma, for sure. And, and how do you preserve humanity in the process wherever we land, and how we can do that? And come together with consortiums of solutions. It's not just one city kicking it to another and getting some best practices sharing. So I think that's a great idea. Thank you, Councilmember Ruddock.
Yeah, I do think that it seems like the cities are not really working together yet on this. You know, the county's trying to work with the cities, but, you know, everybody has, everybody's worried about their own turf, so we have to find a way, you know, kind of around that. It was interesting that Assemblymember Phil Ting was in attendance at this briefing on Friday and was listening, so hoping that he sort of heard the local concerns, especially the need for funds, because the county said, you know, "Well, we're not going to, you know, we might have some staff that can help, you know, with some enforcement, but encampment removal, cleanup, restoration is all going to be at the expense of the cities." And that's a really expensive proposition, especially when you have, you know, people living along, like, water resources where they're being impacted, and you have to deal with that. And there's regulatory issues, permitting issues, it's much more expensive here, future agenda, sorry, yeah.
Do we have any city council reports? No? All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming.